All right, good morning. This is a regular meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. It is June 7th, a little past 8:30, and welcome to your boardroom. And if we might at this time ask the clerk to have a call to order.
Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Michaels, Supervisor Long, and Supervisor Flint.
Supervisor Bennett is on his way. He's just running a little late, but asked that we move ahead. And I'd like to at this time invite Harriet Weigle of our Disabilities Ministries to please offer a moment of affirmation to the board.
Thank you once again for letting me be here. I always enjoy coming here so much. I spent a lot of time last night trying to write out words to tell you, a message to give you. I don't take this responsibility lightly, as I know you don't take your responsibility lightly. I'm not even going to read much of what's on this page. I just simply want to tell you a little story about a Catholic priest. I am not Catholic, I am not Protestant, I am not Jew. I am a soul that believes in God. I'm not trying to apostolize. I'm telling you about purpose in life. This young man is a 45-year-old priest that was serving in Iraq, and on May 29th of last year, it was his anniversary, his 14th year anniversary of his ordination. He was in a Humvee, whatever that is, and there was a mortar attack, and Father Tim was injured. He lost one eye, he's brain damaged, he's paralyzed. He went through operations. He was transferred from Iraq to Walter Reed, from Walter Reed to Minnesota, and he's there now. It's a little over a year. He can move one eye. They found a little bit of movement in one finger. And he's responding to a sensitive mouse in a computer. He can push "and for no" and one or two other commands. I'm thrilled with this man and his story because I know that he's being prepared to do something special in life. I know that he's being called to minister to the over 54 million people with disabilities in this country. I know how many people there are in our county and in our state that have a need for someone like him. And I know that what's happening in his life has happened and is happening in your life. Each one of you has a special call, a special gift. I have followed you and your careers for a long time, and I can see what God is doing with you, and it just thrills me. I am so thankful to be able to serve in your community and to watch you as you grow. I ask that God bless you and watch over you and guide you further in your walk. I pray that he gives you the wisdom that you need to conduct today's business in a thoughtful manner. I pray that he allows you to hear not only the words that are being spoken, but the meaning behind those words, and that he gives you the courage to stand in your convictions, that you listen to that soft voice that speaks within you, and then follow it. The reality of today is the fact that we are put here for a purpose, and that purpose is to serve one another and love one another, and you're doing that. Thank you. Shalom. Amen. Peace be with you.
Thank you. Mr. Dursey, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There's a motion and a second, and that is to receive the minutes of the meeting of the board held Tuesday, May 24th. Seeing no objections, so ordered. Good morning, sir. At this time, we'll have agenda review. Good morning, Mr. Dursey.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a number of minor adjustments to the agenda. Consent item number 13 does not require a fourth of this vote. Consent item number 21, we have a revised Page 1 because it's District 2, not District 4. Item 31, we supply the revised attachment 5. And item number--
Slow down. We're turning pages. You're reading off the notes.
Item 31, revised attachment 5. Should have been provided. Item 32, we revised Page 6 of the board letter, actually it's the attachments, just to correct the dollar amount for the Sheriff's Department from 2.6 million to 4.8 million. And then on item number 43, on Page 3, it's actually a quarterly report that's required, not annual report. The report will actually be filed by the order controller to the State Controller's office.
Did everybody catch that?
No, this is the--
Item 43.
Yeah, this is the sheriff's. Yep, yeah, 43, I'm sorry.
Any other agenda review items? I would like to ask that we pull Consent item 12 just for discussion. Any others on the agenda review?
I move that we accept the modifications to the agenda.
Motion and second. Any objections to that motion? Hearing none, so ordered. Okay, under the consent agenda, items 10 through 24, with just pulling 12 for discussion, which I would like to do so now if that's okay. And really, I just wanted to-- and do we have a representative here? Yes, from the district attorney's office. Item 12 is an item from the district attorney's office asking for approval to enter into an agreement with Coalition to End Family Violence to provide civil legal assistance to clients of the District Attorney's Family Violence Prevention Center. One, I wanted to just thank the district attorney for moving in this direction, and as you can see in the board letter, it clearly says it is the first time that we've been able to-- the district attorney's office is looking at this partnership to offer civil legal assistance. And the other piece of the request is that asking the board to waive the recovery of minor indirect costs, as I understand it, they are minor. And just would ask you to talk a little bit about the program and the partnership with the Coalition.
They've been involved in a number of activities. Initially with Safe Harbor, they're involved with that also, so it's a relationship that's been ongoing for quite a while. So the services they're going to provide are going to be valuable to the victims that we serve. A variety of things. They're going to have presentations. They'll actually provide times for appointments for the clients to come in and visit and ask the questions that they need to ask and get answers that are going to help them through the tough situations they're going through. The particulars, unfortunately, I'm not real familiar with them as to the actual operation and how that will function, and I have a general overview of what takes place.
Okay.
There was supposed to be someone else here unless they haven't arrived.
There.
Okay, good.
One of my questions, and if you would just share a little bit, a question, is it all going to be then onsite here on the main campus as far as the services? And good morning.
Good morning. My name's Jody Pryor, and I'm an attorney at the Coalition to End Family Violence. We recently started a legal services program back in August of 2004, and we're very excited about this new collaboration with the district attorney's office. Basically, what we're going to do is we have a legal services clinic in room 308, which is where the victim services restraining order clinic is going on right now. What we've talked about is basically I'm going to participate in the restraining order clinic and giving general information, mostly related to domestic violence and to family law. And then I'm going to hold office hours for the rest of the day to see anyone who goes to the Family Violence Center and any other people that the court refer over that are victims of domestic violence. And for cases that are retained for further legal services, we're going to help them with their disillusions, and for unmarried parents, we're going to help them with the full range of services in their paternity cases.
Great, great. Other questions or board members?
I just appreciate you coming in this morning to speak to this. I just, I think it's outstanding, another added service that is, one, obviously needed, and the good work of the Coalition is so appreciated in the partnership with the district attorney's office, so thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add the services are free, and they're going to be offered in both English and Spanish.
Great.
So they are going to be-- oh, to answer your question, they are going to be onsite. And hopefully, if we get some more grant funds, we're hoping to open a similar clinic up in Simi Valley for the court there.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd move the recommended action. Motion and second. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. And the rest of the consent agenda then before us? Motion and second. Hearing no objection, so ordered. Thank you again. At this time, we will have opportunity for public comment, and that's for items as described in the agenda. Public comment period. And I have one card. Good morning, Mr. Williams.
Good morning. Caroldean Williams, 60-year resident Ventura County. I live where--
I have no further public comment cards. At this time, we'll have board comments. Supervisor Michaels, good morning.
Good morning. I would ask the board to adjourn in memory of the citizens on this list from the 4th District. They will, pardon me, truly be missed by their families and community. And also, I would like to say a public thank you to the officers that were involved in the rampage a couple weeks ago in the east end of the county. Pardon me, it was a difficult situation for all. And as always, I'm appalled by some of the letters and comments saying that coulda, shoulda, woulda, should have been handled better, the officers didn't do this, the Sheriff's Department didn't do that, the Police Department didn't. You know, hindsight is a wonderful thing, but even hindsight isn't 20/20. And when the officers involved in what was going on did the very best that they could, and Deputy Scott Ramirez was wounded and spent some time in the hospital, I think it's absolutely unnecessary to be so ugly in the criticism. Criticism is always fine, but it can be done respectfully. And I would send to Deputy Ramirez a special thank you and certainly hope that he recovers 100% and is back to duty as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and I would also like to point out to the board that next Tuesday, as we're, next Tuesday should be just about six months, six months ago Supervisor Long and myself came to the board with an information item, letting them know that we would be joining in some efforts to look at the Children's Health Initiative here in Ventura County. And we're going to report back to the board next Tuesday with that and with some recommendations and some thoughts and summary in terms of where we think that is at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. And good morning Supervisor Flynn.
Yes, I would ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on the list. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Parks.
Yes, I just wanted to make a couple comments about things in the community. Believe it or not, the Oat Park Mac is celebrating its 30th year. That's pretty amazing. And also, I would--
That is.
John and Blanca Reli are celebrating their 50th year anniversary, and John is on our Civil Service Commission. They met on a blind date, and it's been success ever since. I also wanted to comment that a little, a young man in my district, Calvin Witt, won the science fair, the Junior Aeronautics Hydrodynamics Division of the California State Science Fair, building an underwater robot. And maybe we can get him to come and show us what that looks like, so congratulations to him. I also wanted to give my condolences particularly to the Nordella family and the family of Steve Mazin and Janice Hain. It was a very tragic, tragic situation. This man obviously went berserk, and we are fortunate that not more people were killed. He ended up in a Walmart store before he killed himself. Fortunately, Deputy Scott Ramirez was wearing a vest, and apparently that saved his life. He was shot, went in through the side of his chest and came out, I believe, out his shoulder or out his back. Very fortunate that he's doing well and is with us, and hopefully, we'll be able to return back to work. Another individual, Kevin Brown, who was working, does pool maintenance work, was also attacked as well, obviously, as the Nordellas children, who I heard are now out of the hospital. Very tragic event, and I know that I have heard from the community a desire for greater notification in instances where you have crime sprees, fugitives out there, and a major manhunt on. And I will look in with others to see if there are some mechanisms that we can use to assist the police and to better safeguard our community. And I will ask that the board please adjourn in memory of the people on this list, including Carol Nordella, Steve Mazin, and Janice Hain.
Thank you. I too have a list to submit, asking the board to adjourn in memory and certainly join the other two supervisors, and appreciation both for the response to that tragic, the tragedy of incident in our county, why we were, Supervisor Parks and I were in New York, part of that occurred. And appreciation to, again, the response team, but, and sympathy to the family members who were lost. The New York trip is one of those that we walked away, I felt the team did a great job. We were very prepared. There were good questions asked by the investors and the bond agencies. They do their homework, so there weren't any surprise questions. Certainly, there were some concerns with BRAC possibilities of realignment. I felt that it was a very positive environment in the questions they asked about the good work we've done in dealing with our fiscal stability and dealing with the structural deficit of the last few years and the strength of the system and being able to replenish our reserves, and that we've made great strides there. Obviously, the truth in the telling will be when we get the ratings and we get the report back from them, but I felt very positive, and I thought that the team that went back were very prepared and did an excellent job, and thanks to Mr. Dursey and all the good, hard background work that he prepared, and of course, our CEO and Ms. Cohen. I thought it was very good, I felt very positive coming out of New York, so. And it's also fun to be there. I expect we'll have further report as we get information. And that wraps up the-- Supervisor Long? Yes.
If I could. I failed to mention Royal High School girls softball CIF champions. And we're trying to get them up here, but as you all understand, this is the busiest time of the year for the graduating seniors especially, and the long distance they would have to travel means they miss so much more class, but we're going to try to get them up here. Royal, this year, just did an awesome job in sports and cross-country track, and one of their stars in track, and so I'm going to try and get them up here, but if not, I at least want them to be acknowledged. And since both of my sons graduated from Royal High School, I'm just a little partial, which I'm not supposed to be because there's Simi Valley High School as well, but I'm extremely proud, and I am going to try to get them up here. So be forewarned, we might have another room full of those healthy, robust, and energetic athletes if we can make it happen.
Great, thank you. Okay, that concludes our board comments, and we can now move to our regular agenda as our next time certain doesn't start until 9:30. So our first item up will be item 35, Healthcare Agency Ratification Approval of a Lease Agreement for Property in West Harvard in Santa Paula. And good morning.
Good morning, board members. Pierre Duran, Healthcare Agency. This is a request for you to ratify and approve a lease in the city of Santa Paula. This will help us continue to meet the demands and service in that area. With me is Mr. Williams, and I appreciate his efforts. He's the one that negotiated the lease for us from public works.
Are there questions from the board? There was competition for this site, so they moved quickly, and I appreciate the good work on it. It is certainly needed. Pleasure, the board?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you for the good work. Appreciate it. Item 36, Human Services Agency Approval to Submit Two Grant Renewal Applications to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Support Housing Program Funds to Continue Homeless Outreach Project Services. And who is going to cover this?
I think you just did it in the title.
Okay.
Move approval.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions, any objections to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. It's certainly something we're familiar with. It's something that we go after aggressively, it's something that we need, and it's an excellent program. And thank you for the good work. Ms. Jenks is rolling her hands here. All right, hearing no objections, so ordered on that item. Thank you. Item 37, Ratification Approval of the Program Year 2005-06 Workforce Investment Act. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Board Members, and Mr. Dursey. My name is Elaine Karandel, and I'm the Executive Director for the Workforce Investment Board. Before you today is a request to ratify and approve the Workforce Investment Act subagreement for fiscal year 2005 and '06. This is the agreement that is the vehicle by which WIA funds can be allocated to Ventura County annually. With your approval, the County of Ventura will be authorized to receive WIA funds from the state and provide services to job seekers and employers in accordance with the approved five-year plan. The WIA subagreement before you reflects one quarter of our youth formula allocation, or $421,386. The balance of the funds for youth, adults, and dislocated workers will be added to the subagreement with the county through a state unilateral modification process. The expected total allocation for the upcoming program year is $5,353,454. This is a decrease from last year of $241,409. Because of some unexpensed funds of this year, which we are allowed to carry over, we expect to see no negative impact to the number or types of services. In fact, we recently received notification of two grant awards of $600,000 to provide training in the biotech industry in partnership with Ventura College, and services to any dislocated workers that were impacted as a result of this year's winter storms. So thank you, and I'll take your questions.
Other questions? Yes.
No questions, just a comment. I think it's appropriate, since we have the new Executive Director of the Workforce Investment Board here. Very nice meeting you and having you come around, and I think we had some good conversations and dialogue with Workforce Investment Board recently, and I just really appreciate the commitment of the new Executive Director to really focus on that very big, tough challenge, and that's the whole training issue out there. And as we've said, there aren't enough resources that we can possibly devote, given the magnitude of that job out there, and so we really appreciate the focus on that. So thank you, and thanks for coming around.
Thank you, Superintendent.
And good luck with this sort of new effort, new energy, that direction. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I just comment, too, that we can also look forward, as you grow, that we may be able to have more resources available if we do have to relocate some jobs from our naval base. So it's good to see you have a growth in your budget for that and the grants that you received.
Thank you. We did put in an application for some planning funds that were allocated to the state as for the BRAC effort, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Pleasure, the board?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Hearing no objection? So ordered. Thank you again, and welcome. Next up, we have item 38, which is authorization to submit two grant renewal applications to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Rain Project. There she is. Good morning, Ms. Jenks.
Good morning. Kathy Jenks, the Rain Project. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm asking permission for something I already did, which was submit two applications for funding through the City of Oxnard and the Ventura County Homeless and Housing Authority, or Commission, for operating funds for Rain Project for fiscal year '06-'07.
Would this not then be a ratification instead of an authorization to submit two grants?
Yes.
Okay. And the basis for not being able to come to us prior to, for authorization?
There was a, there's a timeline on these things that just, they got them out, and the notices were due within five days of when we got the NOFA, so everything just got together. We had to submit them, and these were all, mine and Human Service Agency are all renewals. None of them are new applications. And the policy has changed apparently in the last year also, where before the renewals were automatic and we needed only CEO approval. We found out after the fact that we, ooh, also needed board approval, so that's why I'm here, being honest with you.
Thank you. No other questions? I'll move that we ratified the grant.
We already have, we already have a motion and a second, but we'll change the word to ratification with that change. with that change. Second agrees. Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks for your good work with this homeless stuff.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. All right, next up, and we still have time, item 39, Report Back Adoption Resolution, New Classification Amended Salary. Good morning, Mr. Renee.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Dursi. The item before you today is a report that's being brought back. At your last meeting, the assessor presented information requesting the establishment of new positions and amendments for various salaries. As a result, that information was sent back to the CEO's office for further review. The CEO did meet with the assessor, and I am here today making recommendations to establish two supervising positions, one for a supervising appraiser, the other for a supervising auditor appraiser, and to amend the salary ranges for the appraiser trainee and the auditor appraiser trainee. Auditor appraiser trainee, yes. We are not recommending that there be any market-based adjustments for the other positions at this time. That information will be taken into consideration when we again review salaries for management, which will probably be in the fall. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions?
One question.
Supervisor.
I think in addition to the discussion about market-based average, which is not being recommended now, wasn't there also a request for retroactivity in terms of pay, and is that still part of this packet?
The market-based averages were recommended that they be paid back to January, not for the new positions. The new positions are prospective only.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Move approval.
Second.
So, motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Thank you, and we'll be back to visit this in the fall. Another piece of it. All right, item 40, Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. Item 40 is just a request to appoint Lian Kennedy to the Oakview Local Recreation Commission.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, I'm sorry.
Motion and a second. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. Item 41, Supervisor Parks.
Move that we appoint Mary Pallett to the Commission for Women. She's one of the individuals who also applied for the MAC position that I was able to bring in and recruit for this position.
So, motion and a second. Hearing no objection? So ordered. Item 42, Report of the Use of Emergency Contract Authority by the Director of Public Works. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Mr. Dursi. This is to continue some emergency contracting authority that previously had been requested by the Director of Public Works. We have a total of seven projects that we're asking for that authority to continue through the end of June. If you happen to answer any questions.
Other questions? Hearing none.
Move approval.
So, motion and a second. Hearing no objection? So ordered. Thank you, Mr. Pringle. Item 43, Sheriff's Department Approval to Establish DNA Identification Trust Fund Policy. Good morning, Mr. Anarico.
Good morning, Madam Supervisor, Members of the Board, Mr. Dursi. I'm here representing the sheriff with a request of the board to, number one, establish a DNA identification fund to implement the provisions of Prop. 69. Another request in connection with this is for the board to authorize the appropriate county agency to establish a full-time, regular allocation of a forensic scientist tree and to authorize the auditor controller to make the necessary adjustments to our appropriations and revenue accounts to reflect the revenue that will be coming in implementing this initiative. November 2, 2004, the voters of California had passed Prop. 69, which amended both the California Penal Code and the California Government Code, and proposed to establish the DNA Fingerprint Unsolved Crime and Innocence Protection Act. Essentially, this will establish a statewide DNA database, and Ventura County is an active participant already and the forerunner to this program, which is the CODIS program, first started by the federal government, which we are now currently implementing. In the ensuing years, the initiative had provided that the state will slowly or gradually shed its responsibilities in analyzing the DNA samples that are taken by the counties and will also drop gradually their share of the proceeds from this initiative. We in Ventura County envision that 75% of the workload in five years will be done within the county by our crime laboratory, and that's why it's essential that we, even now, start hiring the people or preparing for that eventual day when we will be taking the bulk of the responsibilities under the initiative. There is a revenue stream that is provided for in this initiative, and we will make sure that Ventura County gets its fair share of those proceeds.
We'd like to hear that. Other questions?
Move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Hearing no objection? So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go get them, go after it. Thank you so much. All right, item 44, Correspondents.
Move to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
And a second. Hearing no objection to that? So ordered. Okay, now, we have a 15-minute break.
Close session.
Close session. He's nodding his head. Yes, we can do something in 15 minutes? We sure can.
Yes, we can.
We can get a cup of tea. All right, let's go into a closed session, see what we can get done. We'll be back out at 9:30.
We're back for our morning presentations and we have the great opportunity here to celebrate and kick off the resolution to celebrate the Ventura County Greek Festival, June 10th through June 12th, and proclaim the week of June 6th through June 12th as Greek Heritage Week. And Board, it's always a pleasure to do this yearly, as it is to have the Greek Festival yearly in our county and to celebrate such wonderful tradition, wonderful faith, community that engages in our community in so many, so many, many giving ways. And as I look out and invite Lynn Mikolatos and Reverend Father Gary Kurekhan, who just joined our local Greek church in August of 2004, and is Chris Poulos, the festival chair, out being busy getting it together, and the very important pastry chair also is not with us, Katherine Pepas. For those of you who I know get a chance to celebrate this Greek Festival, which will be this weekend and then the entire week of Heritage Week, it is a wonderful, joyous, family, just terrific festival in our county. I'm going to read a little bit from the resolution and invite you to come to the diocese and welcome you. The St. Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church was established in our county in 1977 on the Camarillo Airport grounds, when a handful of Greek Orthodox Christians purchased the chapel of what was the former Oxnard Air Force Base. And the community of St. Demetrius consists of 150 Orthodox families and growing daily. It's the only Greek Orthodox Church in our county. It continues to grow under the new leadership of Reverend Father Gary, and who, as I said, joined the parish in 2004, and the new Metropolitan Geraisimos of San Francisco, who was newly enthroned and who celebrated Holy Friday here in our county on April 30th, and quite a magnificent celebration. St. Demetrius continues to prosper. They've purchased new land, which is very exciting, for a new church site at the corner of Santa Rosa Road and Wood Creek in Camarillo. And as they celebrate, starting with May 1st, the Greek Easter services and the Agape picnic on the new land, and served over 300 lamb dinners to parishioners and guests. As they kick off this week to celebrate the 26th Annual Ventura County Greek Festival, they'll start that with a morning run, the 7th Annual Greek 5K, 10K, 1-mile run, which our CEO has participated in. I go out and cheer him on. And the benefits go to our wonderful food bank, Food Share of Ventura County, which Lynn is always graciously so much part of the advisory council and supportive of the Food Share program. And that will take place on June 11th at 8:00 a.m. That's the run, the 5-10K run, Mr. Bennett, in case you're up and about. It really attracts 200 to 250 participants who are out there and ready to go, because when they finish the run, they get goodies.
There's always an incentive plan.
It is a way of celebrating the heritage and the culture. And at the festival, the live music performed all weekend by the Greek Orchestra, the Hellenic sounds of Los Angeles, Greek folk dancing by the St. Demetrius youth dance groups, the Greek at the Harbor dancers, and the families who join together to celebrate the favorite Greek foods, the music, the heritage, the religious items, and the festival. And the theme this year is "The Fun Begins", so I bring this down to present it, to welcome you, to celebrate with you, and to look forward to the weekend. And if you'd like to say a few words, please do.
Thank you. I just wanted to introduce our new priest, Father Gary. He's really brought a lot of energy to our parish, and we're very excited with his new youth programs, and we hope to have wonderful Greek culture and heritage for the county in our new facility.
I just wanted to also say I'm pleased to be part of this great county, and I'm very thrilled to be part of a community that, I can't think of any other Greek Orthodox festival in the diocese or the metropolis, which spans seven western states, that does a Food Share run, that actually does something for their festival that raises funds for something other than the church. So I'm really pleased to have a community that does that, because I think the more that we give, the more we receive as well. So I'm proud to be the pastor of people who have thought about that as well. It's going to be a great weekend. We're doing lots of great things for the county, and we're just excited about growing and being the Greek Orthodox Church in your county. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
To celebrate, to share with you.
And shall I sit down?
We're going to step around a little angle here.
Oh.
Perfect.
Great.
Grab one more just.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, one more.
Okay.
There you go.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're very happy to leave a few goodies, so you can remember us. Yeah. And I have a run form in here for Supervisor Bennett.
I'll be running also, so.
You're going to run?
I'm going to run also, yeah.
Okay. You can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, I thought we were having lunch.
It's always such a treat.
Until lunch. All right.
And the festival is fun.
Again, thank you. And please do join the festi-- go to the festival. It's great fun. Next up, we have item 26, which is the 9/30 approval of final maps and agreements for construction of subdivision improvements. And good morning, again.
Good morning. Alec Pringle, again, with the Public Works Agency. Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Mr. Jersey. This item is for the approval of final maps 4192, which was previously continued from an earlier agenda. It is approval not only of the final map, but the agreement for improvement of the subdivision, as well as deviations to Carlisle Road. The tracks are located at Lake Sherwood, comprising 237 acres and 48 parcels. By way of history, the board approved the tentative map and its conditions in May of 1992, and staff found that the conditions of the approval, for approval, are complete. We've also found that the conditions, including Carlisle Road realignment, are done. The alignment does remove 47 trees, and may impact another 39 as well during the realignment work. Portions of Carlisle Road will, in some cases, not meet the county road standards. However, the realignment plan for the road does comply with the conditions of the tentative map. Carlisle Road Bridge is also being replaced, along with some storm drainage improvements. That's a basic summary of the final map. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Other questions?
I have a card that's been submitted, and only if there are questions, from Scott Williams. But, okay. Hearing no questions? Okay, hold on. Let me see. Okay. I had to check, see if we had a public hearing process, but we don't. Okay. Board's pleasure.
Move approval of the recommended actions.
Yes, I would like to make a couple comments, and that's just that--
Hold just a second. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second it and make a couple comments.
Okay, then, please.
I know that this project is something that is needed in terms, certainly, of the bridge improvements. I think we're rated the worst bridge in the county, and it does need that. And it is a part of the conditions of approval that the Sherwood Development Company does basically replace the bridge. It also incorporated a widening of Carlisle Road. And Carlisle Road has very few houses on it, and the need for a wide road there didn't seem necessary. And as a result, the Public Works Department has agreed to allow for a reduced width road, and has to bring it before us for waivers, because it does reduce the width. And the basis for that reduction is so that we can save as many of the trees as we can. I know the bridge replacement will take the significant portion of the trees that will have to be removed, but that is necessary to avoid flooding. But I appreciate the fact that the county was able to work with the developer and allow for a lesser width to help keep the trees in place, sycamores and oak trees. And I do understand it doesn't meet the county road standards. Additionally, this was before us, at our last meeting, there's also a requirement to put a trail alongside Carlisle Road. And it's basically impossible to get that trail in, in some of the places, because there's, you know, basically a hill, a hill, a mountainside, so close to the road, that you'd have to blast away to try to build a trail. And I'm now working with the developer to see if we can, at a later time, and they have another track coming before us, that actually includes a trail going into the open space behind Sherwood Development Company's property, to see that we can actually get some trail built, instead of just an easement, in exchange for not having to have this trail on the road. So I think that's something that we'll be able to work out, and the planning department has indicated that they are amenable to considering that. It may not take an area plan amendment and the whole EIR and all to do something like that. And I think it would be nice to get something, you know, get something physical, like an actual trail, instead of just a line on a map. And that's something that I hopefully will be able to work for and get. And I think it's, in the end, it will benefit the residents there, and we'll get an actual trail. So that's my goal, and we'll see how far we can get on that. But I do appreciate the fact that we are doing all we can to preserve the rural nature of the road. And as construction goes along, there will also be a greater attempt, even though they have the approval here, to even reduce the number of trees to a lower amount, so we won't have to take out as many. But with that, I do second the motion, and thank both the developer and the county for working together, and hopefully we'll see some trail actually be built at the next time they come in. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Again, a motion, a second. Hearing-- any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Thank you. Our next item is a second hearing, item 27, Adoption Amendments to Ordinance 4280, Ventura County Campaign Finance Reform. And-- Again, that is a, it is a second hearing.
Right. So the ordinance before you represents the changes that your board made at the first hearing, and--
Is your mic on? Is that mic on? Okay.
Marty Robinson with the county execs office.
What hat do you have on today?
RMA. So, anyway, I think it's just up for second reading. The ordinance, the material in front of you represents the changes that were made last. That's the last.
Okay. Other questions? This is a second reading. I don't see, there aren't any cards to raise questions. Pleasure to the board.
Move the recommended action.
Second.
It's a motion and a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to vote against the ordinance. Last, or two weeks ago, I think it was, I gave you a personal experience of the ordinance, with the ordinance, I should say. And the reason for my no vote is because of that personal experience. Supervisor Bennett involved himself from the very beginning with the issue, the complaint that was brought to the commission. And in a sense, ex parte communications took place, because Mr. Bennett did talk about his position on the complaint. And I think when you involve yourself in a ordinance, in an ordinance like this, where there's a commission that's going to make a ruling, then you weaken the integrity of that ordinance. Because people feel, if a supervisor, in this case, where we all were involved in voting on this ordinance, is so much involved from the very beginning, and working on the very campaign that opposed me, this is not good. This is not good government. So this is the reason for my no vote.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
If I could, I was hoping we were just going to move this. I wasn't planning on getting into this. But I guess it just raises a question in my mind, that I just want to ask Supervisor Flynn. Would you be abstaining from votes on Santa Rosa Road after receiving the $13,000 in contributions from one individual? Or, I was just curious.
Because there was nothing illegal about, or contrary to the ordinance, and the money accepted from Santa Rosa.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Somebody--
And as long as you bring it up, I would ask, I would ask that you very carefully read the ordinance as it was presented, before you changed it. If, if the ordinance is very clear before you, your amendment changed it, why did you make an amendment?
Other further comments? Okay, again, there's a motion and a second. One objection, any further objection? The audience passes four to one. Thank you. And another time-certain item, item 28. This is adoption of an ordinance delegating authority to invest. And good morning, Mr. Matheny.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Laurie Matheny, your treasure tax collector. This item is on for second reading also.
Move approval.
It's a motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered, and thank you, sir. Always good work.
Always, always.
Okay, board members, we now have 10 o'clock time certain, 11, 11:30, and 12. This is adoption of an ordinance delegating authority to invest. And good morning, Mr. Matheny.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Laurie Matheny, your treasure tax collector. This item is on for second reading also.
Move approval.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered, and thank you, sir. Always good work.
Always, always.
Okay, Board members, we now have 10 o'clock time certain, 11:00, 11:30, and 12:00, and we have a break right now. So, which time, because our remainder of our closed session's going to take an hour, so I don't recommend we start that, we'll just take a break. We'll be back at 10:00.
Good Board members, if we could come back to the dais and get started with the rest of our agenda. I want to make sure John has one. Where's Steve? Okay, well, we're going to move ahead. All right, we'll start with our 10:00 time certain items, and the first one is item 29, and it is a public hearing regarding fiscal year 2006 Benefit Assessment Program for the Watershed Protection District. And good morning, Mr. Pratt.
Good morning, Chair Long, Board members, Mr. Dursey. Recall, this is the second reading of this. We originally presented it to your Board on May 3rd. Today, we're asking you to receive any testimony, direct us in any changes you want made to the benefit assessment, and then if, after that, approve and adopt this assessment. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Are there questions? Okay, I don't hear any questions. This is a public hearing. I don't have cards submitted. Are there any, anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will now have the item before the Board.
I'll move the adoption of the recommendations.
Second. It's a motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, time certain, is a public hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution establishing the Department of Airports' rent and fee schedules for '05-'06. Good morning, Mr. Smith.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mr. Dursey, we're here for our annual review of proposed rent and fees for the Department of Airports. I have a very short presentation to share some information with you about the process that we went through. This being a five-year cycle, there are several rent and fee items that, per your Board's policy, we're supposed to look at in terms of cost recovery, and we've done that. To share a couple things with you as background, we looked at the two airports and divided our operations into cost centers. And are these five cost centers, you have airfield, which is runways and taxiways; we have flight line commercial, which really are aviation businesses; and then we have flight line non-commercial, which are non-business activities, our hangar and tie-down folks; and then we have two cost centers that are specific to each airport, the terminal being at Oxnard for that terminal operation where we have the airline service; and then over at Camarillo, we have a business park cost center, which is the non-aviation. And what we did is we went back, took the last three years of audited financial statements for airport operations, and then took the AP9 projections, and then next year's proposed budget, and averaged our operating expenses and revenues over that five-year period, and assigned those to the cost centers. And so basically did the arithmetic to find out what it was costing, and what the revenue was, and what the total picture is on each cost center. And capital was included in there by way of depreciation from the latest depreciation schedule that we received from the Auditor Controller's Office. Just to give you a picture of what it looks like, the results here at Camarillo Airport, as expected, the airfield cost center does not pay for itself, and that's, I say as expected because that's very typical, can't raise the fees enough or we drive out the users, since that's a high-cost cost center. Flight line commercial, with our aviation businesses at Camarillo, is paying for itself through its current rate structure. Flight line non-commercial, our hangars and tie-downs, the same. And then Business Park is doing very well for our airport system, that it throws off quite a bit of revenue in terms of its expense. And so as a total snapshot for you, looking at Camarillo Airport, we do have a net income over there when the cost centers are combined. If we look at Oxnard, it's a little bit different story. Again, airfield doesn't pay for itself, as expected. Flight line commercial is not yet paying for itself. That's our two FBO businesses, essentially. And then flight line non-commercial, hangar tie-downs, throw off a little bit of revenue. And then the terminal is not paying for itself from a cost center perspective yet either. So in total, at Oxnard, this is just an example of how we see in our budget every year that it does operate at a deficit. However, being a system of airports, if we combine these, then this slide shows us that overall, as a department, we do, if our cost centers combined, we do have revenues and seating expenses. Airfield, we can't get there. But flight line commercial, when we combine those cost centers of the airport, it is meeting its costs and throwing off some revenue. The same with our hangars and tie-downs. And then the Business Park and Terminal don't change in this graph from what you saw in the other graphs, because they're specific to the airports. So what really, to summarize what this information means to us in our recommendations to you is that we looked at our current rates, and based upon us as a system of airports, the two airports, about $254,000 to the good, when we look at it from a cost center perspective So with the picture of the cost centers, then we look next in this five-year cycle to say, well, what rates would we recommend to you to be adjusted to help us with the cost center picture? And we have some recommendations for you. I know that they are in the staff report, but we thought we'd present them in brief to you this way, to focus in on the rates that we propose to change. The red items are proposed to be changed. So transient tie-downs, and large aircraft tie-downs, and landing fees, we all propose to change, to increase, and that will help us a little bit in the airfield cost center, which runs at a permanent deficit. And then we're proposing to bring the aviation businesses at Oxnard that operate out of county facilities up to the same rate level that Camarillo pays. And the reason we're proposing that is although Oxnard has historically enjoyed a discount over there for several reasons, the reality is when we look at the cost centers, the aviation businesses at Camarillo are, from a cost center perspective, are subsidizing Oxnard. And if that is the case, then we're recommending that they pay the same rate at Oxnard. And also, we propose to increase what we charge for square foot for ramp for the aviation businesses at both airports. And that's because that ramp rate is historically based upon what we charge for aviation land. And aviation land rates have gone up the last five or six years, but no adjustments have been made in the ramp rate, so we'd like to catch up on that. We have, in the rent and fee, another item of significance is that there's, a policy your Board has established for 10 years now. When we enter into new long-term leases, we have a requirement of $10,000 per acre per year for capital investment to earn a long-term lease. And that's both for aviation and non-aviation facilities. We've known for some time at the staff level that the $10,000 figure has fallen behind the times, so we did a spreadsheet on this and took the last eight major long-term leases that had been executed at the department, looked at the acreage, and looked at what it cost them to build their facilities, and then averaged that, and then multiplied by 80 percent. And that number came out to be $20,000. So we're recommending that the $20,000 be the new level of capital improvement requirement as being realistic and in step with what it costs today to make improvements. And we're recommending an increase in the auto parking at Oxnard Terminal to a dollar, from $5 to $6 daily maximum, to help make up some of the deficit the terminal is operating at. And then there are some other items that are in here to recommend increase. The document copying fee is one, and the reason I put it up there is it's a pretty large jump from 25 cents to 93 cents. But we analyze that in terms of what it costs our staff, both with the equipment and their time, on average, to make copies, so we're recommending we go to 93 cents. And then the rental car percentage rent on those leases, we're recommending, it actually goes to 8 percent. Last year, we were before you, we wanted to go to 8 percent from the previous 6.5, but the rental car companies asked if that be broken into two years. You agreed to do that last year and only went to 7.5, and we're back for the half percent this year. We based some of these rates on surveys, and both strictly on survey, and then there are other rates that were supposed to compare to surveys, and this is per your Board's policy on rate setting at the airport. So to show you what we did, we went through those airports that are listed up there, did a fairly inclusive survey on all the information we could get, and I wanted to show you just some results. On landing fees, we're proposing to go to a dollar, but the average rate of the airports we were able to survey, when we throw out the highest and lowest rate in that survey, is a $1.16, to show you that going to a dollar does not place us in a high category with those airports. Same thing on the transient parking for overnight aircraft, we're proposing to go to $7. That is at the average that we found. And the rental cars, I explained that, we go to 8 percent, but that's really a carryover from last year. Additional survey results, terminal rent at Oxnard, since we know the cost center's losing, we looked at our rent structure there and say, how could we make up some money in the terminal rents? But when we look at it, the reality is it's only the airline rate that is affected by a rent increase. And right now, they're locked in in a five-year lease. They won't have their rent adjusted window until 2008. So if we adjust the rent up from $1.40 per square foot towards the average of 205 that we found in the survey, it really won't do anything for us, and that's because the rental cars' contracts are structured differently where their rent is set, but then it's really absorbed in their percentage override. And the revenue that we receive from their percent on sales is far greater than the rent. So in that sense, it really doesn't matter how the square foot rent is set for them. So we're not recommending any change at this time in the terminal rate. What I think is of significance is the aeronautical service provider hangar and office rates are well below average, but the reason that we're not recommending a change is that, per your Board's policy, those are to be set at cost recovery. And from the cost center basis, they are paying their way and actually throw off some revenue, so we're recommending no change. The auto parking survey that we did, the average rate is $6 from those airports that are listed up there, and we're proposing to go to $6. What this all means to us, and the cost, from the cost recovery perspective, is this is the same slide we showed you earlier, but at the bottom, we've added additional revenue that we would anticipate if these changes are approved by your Board. And so in the bottom right-hand corner, we would go to about $311,882 to the good on an operating cost center basis compared to the $253,591 that you see above. There is also one other little area of change in here that I feel should point out, and that's on activity permits. You may have noticed in the rent and fee letter, or document itself, on activity permits, there are some changes where we've gone up from $30 to $500 in that type of spread. And we carefully analyzed those activity permits for what it costs us to administer. And the recommendations we make on those changes are strictly cost recovery. And per your Board's policy, there's no profit or anything made on those. They're strictly the fees cost. But we are asking in the rent and fee that you would provide a little more flexibility to us at the staff level in the activity permit arena, so that if we have an activity permit, cost recovery is set, let's say we're supposed to charge $500, and we find out that the type of service that would be provided on that, or the activity, can't afford that, it would mean you couldn't have it, then we'd want the ability to negotiate that activity fee to something reasonable that would make it work. And so we're asking for that, and that's detailed in the rent and fee document. A couple things we're doing at Oxnard Terminal to try to increase revenue, to bring that cost center deficit up, is we're looking at bringing in a new rental car company to replace one that doesn't do well there at all. We have, we're in the process of doing that, so I think we'll get more revenue there. And then the others, we're getting close to issuing a request for proposal for the restaurant, to go out and try to find a new operator and make that more successful. The rent and fee with the cost recovery documentation's been reviewed by the Auditor Controller's Office, and the rent and fee letter by them and County Council, and by the CEO's office. And so we're recommending that you hold your public hearing and adopt the rent and fee as presented, or direct changes to staff. And that's the staff report. Thank you.
Questions for staff on the report?
I was just wondering, the subsidy, if you will, in the airfield portion, is that pretty standard for all airports?
Yes, it is. The revenue sources are severely limited. There's the landing fees, fuel flowage, and then the overnight transient aircraft fees, and that's it. And it's a high-cost, it's a high-expense cost center. So that is, especially for smaller airports, it's standard.
And then also, is there any marketing plan in this, too? You want to bring in a restaurant, but you also need to bring in people to the restaurants? And, you know, as you expand towards that, I would think a marketing plan could assist that.
In regard specifically to the restaurant, the request for proposal that we prepared to release, part of the evaluation criteria, and I think it's 25 percent of that criteria, is what marketing commitment a new operator would make for the first year of occupancy. If beyond that restaurant, my answer would be, no, we have no marketing activity going on for the Oxnard Airport.
Okay. Maybe there's some contemplation in the future for that, because as their revenues increase, so do yours, right?
Yes.
Other questions?
Yeah, just...
Supervisor Michaels.
Silly one. On one of the raises, and I lost it, and we don't have the hard copy before us, but, oh, it was the copying charge?
Yes.
You went to 93 cents?
Yes.
Why didn't you go to 95 cents?
We could certainly do that.
I think that makes much more sense, because even multiples of 95 are easier. And I understand that people are thinking about getting rid of the penny in the future, so, but it just, for ease of not only the customer but staff, it just makes sense. And that may have been right on the money as far as the cost, but, so throw 2 cents on there for effort and at least make it reasonable.
Be happy to do that.
I know you would. But it just doesn't, you know, odd numbers like that for copy fees, one copy, et cetera, is just, to me, I don't see the use in it, so I would move that you make it 95.
We're going to have a public hearing first. If there are no further questions, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak to the Board on the rent and fee schedules for the airports? Having no cards submitted, I will close the public hearing. Now it's back to the Board.
Move the adoption, the budget and recommendations.
Could we move that with the amendment to make the copy fee at 95 cents? Per copy?
How about a dollar?
Fine by me. That's a little excessive.
How about 90 cents?
Oh, we have a question from our Auditor Controller.
I have a question to County Council on changing the copying charge to exceed the cost that, I believe there's a government code requirement that says we cannot charge more than cost.
Well, that's true, but I don't know whether the 93 cents was right on the money, and it's an estimate, I'm sure, in any respect.
Absolutely an estimate.
And so whether, whether the 95 cents would exceed a reasonable amount in this context, I think is something that Mr. Smith would have to respond to if it's truly a question. I would observe, of course, the airport is an enterprise operation. I'm not sure what this copying charge is for, but for all of its enterprise activities, the airport can charge more than cost. Right.
So, anyway. So the motion is to...
With the amendment.
With the amendment on the copy fee. Supervisor Bennett, a question?
I guess comments, now that we're, I want to make sure we had the public hearing first.
Yes.
This question of the Board's policy about cost recovery, with this being an enterprise fund, I mean, we certainly don't run our golf course, you know, said that's a revenue generator on a cost recovery basis. I don't know, I really just don't know what I think about this, so I'm just asking, could you set an appointment up with me in my office? I just want to talk about this and sort of learn, see where I stand with this. Because just like the auditor, you know, the auditor pointing out, we can't charge more than the cost, if that's potentially because of policy, but in some areas, we're actually charging less than cost, and other areas, we're charging more, so is it, is it cost overall, or is it cost by every specific thing? I think it couldn't possibly be that every activity has to be broken down to its most minute and then try to charge...
Not in an enterprise.
Yeah.
I've been through it in an enterprise.
Exactly. So my point is, you know, if we're sitting there, some areas not generating cost recover, so I just want to at least consider that and take...
I will do so.
So if you would set that up. The other thing that I would just like to offer from my own perspective is that it is far more rational for us to increase rates annually a little bit than to say, oh, we're not going to deal with that, and then all of a sudden come in and ask for big percentage increases. So I just would hope that we will constantly look at our rates so that we don't create something that somebody can say, they're increasing our rates 37 percent or whatever. It'd be much better. And I think that that's realistic, because we all know that the cost of doing business goes up at least a little bit every year. Thank you.
That's very true. And there's motion and a second with amendment on the copy fee. Any, yes, sir?
May I say something before we conclude this item? It doesn't necessarily relate to the item, but, you know, with Santa Paula Airport having the difficulties that it had, and continues to have, the touch-and-go operation, at least one of them moved over to Oxnard, and I would really like to compliment the owner of that operation, and the other touch-and-go operators also, because if you bring that plane around over Woolley Road, which they said is very easy, then that's going to keep the complaints from coming in. And they, they said there's no problem to that. And I want to compliment them for doing that, and also you for the great leadership you have provided on the airports.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, a motion and a second with the amendment. Any change, any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. And again, thank you. Good work. And your comment, Supervisor Bennett, on the raising fees and doing it annually, evaluating it, the authority spoke the same, because a couple years ago, when we looked and had to go to a significant market jump, it was painful. So now we're in, I think, a better position, and it has been certainly the good work with Scott and his team to annually make sure we're as close to where we need to be for recovery and for market as possible, to make sure these are truly good, strong enterprise systems, so. Hearing no objection to the motion, it's passed, and we thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 31 is a public hearing before the Board, sitting as both Supervisors, Watershed Protection District, Fire Protection District, regarding our current service costs for '05-'06, county rate and fees, et cetera, et cetera. Item 31 this is, and Mr. Dursey, are you leading off?
Yes, I'm leading off. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a general background, our office compiles this information. We get a lot of information, first from departments are the ones that calculate all the rates. Our office compiles them, but frankly, most of the work is done by Tom Dawson in the Auditor Controller's Office, and Robert Kwong in the County Council's Office. There's a lot of legal and cost accounting work that has to be done reviewing this information, and our office appreciates their support in this board letter. We have a number of recommendations, the three recommendations. Before we proceed, any further attachment, five, there's an ordinance that we'd like to pull for the time being, or, and we will come back to your Board. It's been requested by Resource Management Agency to pull that ordinance, and we will come back to you at a future date for, it's ordinance 4287, attachment five, correct. And that is in regard to the Consumer Protection Business Permit. The, overall, we have seven, well, six, six attachments now, including five resolutions and one ordinance. We request that you adopt the resolutions establishing the various rates for the county and the fire protection and watershed protection districts. Read the proposed ordinance, singular ordinance now, attachment two, entitled only, and continue till June 14th. And then ratify, pass agreements between ISD and non-county public entities, and delegate authority to CIO to offer the, offer contract with these various non-public... But in some areas, we're actually charging less than cost, and other areas, we're charging more. So, is it cost overall, or is it cost by every specific thing? I think it couldn't possibly be that every activity has to be broken down to its most minute and then try to charge...
Not in an enterprise. I've been through doing it in an enterprise.
Exactly. So, my point is, you know, if we're sitting there with some areas not generating cost recover, so I just want to at least consider that and take...
I will do so.
So, if you would set that up. The other thing that I would just like to offer, from my own perspective, is that it is far more rational for us to increase rates annually a little bit than to say, oh, we're not going to deal with that, and then all of a sudden come in and ask for big percentage increases. So, I just would hope that we will constantly look at our rates so that we don't create something that somebody can say, they're increasing our rates 37% or whatever. It'd be much better. And I think that that's realistic, because we all know that the cost of doing business goes up at least a little bit every year. Thank you.
That's very true. And there's motion and second with amendment on the copy fee. Yes, sir.
May I say something before we conclude this item? It doesn't necessarily relate to the item, but, you know, with Santa Paula Airport having the difficulties that it had, and continues to have, the touch-and-go operation, at least one of them moved over to Oxnard. And I would really like to compliment the owner of that operation and the other touch-and-go operators also. Because if you bring that plane around over Woolley Road, which they said is very easy, then that's going to keep the complaints from coming in. And they said there's no problem to that. And I want to compliment them for doing that, and also you for the great leadership you have provided on the airports.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, a motion and a second with the amendment. Any change, any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. And again, thank you. Good work. And your comment, Supervisor Bennett, on the raising fees and doing it annually, evaluating it, the authority spoke the same. Because a couple of years ago, when we looked and had to go to a significant market jump, it was painful. So, now we're in, I think, a better position. And it has been certainly the good work with Scott and his team to annually make sure we're as close to where we need to be for recovery and for market as possible, to make sure these are truly good, strong enterprise systems. So, hearing no objection to the motion, it's passed, and we thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 31 is a public hearing before the board, sitting as both supervisors, watershed protection district, fire protection district, regarding our current service costs for 05-06, county rate and fees, et cetera, et cetera. Item 31 this is. And Mr. Dursey, are you leading off?
Yes, I'm leading off. Thank you, madam chair. Just as a general background, our office compiles this information. We get a lot of information, first from departments are the ones that calculate all the rates. Our office compiles them. But frankly, most of the work is done by Tom Dawson in the auditor controller's office and Robert Kwong in the county council's office. There's a lot of legal and cost accounting work that has to be done reviewing this information. And our office appreciates their support in this board letter. We have a number of recommendations, the three recommendations. Before we proceed, any further attachment five, there's an ordinance that we'd like to pull for the time being, and we will come back to your board. It's been requested by our resource management agency to pull that ordinance, and we will come back to you at a future date for, it's ordinance 4287.
Attachment five, correct.
And that is in regard to the consumer protection business permit. The, overall, we have seven, well, six, six attachments now, including five resolutions and one ordinance. We request that you adopt the resolutions establishing the various rates for the county and the fire protection and watershed protection districts. Read the proposed ordinance, singular ordinance now, attachment two, entitled only and continue till June 14th. And then ratify, pass agreements between ISD and non-county public entities, and delegate authority to CIO to offer the, offer contract with these various non-public, non-county public entities such as cities, special districts, for technological services and in accordance with the established ISF service rates and fees. Like I said earlier, our office does, acts as compiler of the information, and if there are specific questions, we have representatives from each of the departments to answer the specific questions on those attachments.
Okay. That's the report. Are there questions?
I just had one relative to the air pollution control district fees that the CEO clerk would be charging. And I'm not quite clear on what the relationship is. I see it on page A-3.
Page what?
Hearing fees.
A-3.
A-3 in the appendix after the resume.
Yeah, go ahead. You can answer.
Hearing fees.
The clerk of the board's office is the clerk to the air pollution control hearing board. So, since they are a special district, we are providing clerking fees to them, we are charging them for our staff time. The meetings are in the evening, so there's overtime charges to my staff. So, what they do is they get a large fee to file a petition. We get a portion of that fee for the clerking services, which is publishing the notice, sending the notice out to the public, as well as the clerking service for them. So, that's what that fee is incorporated by.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Okay. I don't hear any questions. And this is a public hearing. And I'll open the public hearing. And I don't have cards. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the board? Seeing none, rush forward. I'll close the public hearing. It is before the board.
Move approval of the recommended fees and rates for 05-06.
As, as modified.
As modified.
As modified.
I'll second that.
So, motion and second. And again, this is to read ordinance entitled only and continue for final adoption of June 14th. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. So ordered. We'll read entitled only.
The title of attachment two ordinance is, "An Ordinance of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors Amending Ordinance 4306, Adopted on June 22, 2004, Providing for a Fee Increased to Examine a Record of Survey in Excess of $100 as Provided for in the Business and Professions Code, and to Increase the Subdivision MAP Charge to Assist in Funding a Larger Portion of the County's Survey Examination Program."
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might, now that we have done the first reading on that, we received, actually, you and all of us received a letter from the California Grocers Association referencing a Assembly Bill 889 that they're working on. And they had asked for a delay in these fees. And what I'm asking is, at the next hearing, if staff could comment back to the board on this letter, the request that was made, and so we have a better... Hello?
That is why we pulled, that's one of the reasons we pulled the...
That one attachment?
That's correct. That's correct. Because give staff some more time to evaluate that particular item, plus meet with...
Meet with them?
Correct.
Okay. Because I didn't see that until today, this morning. And so, I just want the information back. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you all for your good work on that. I know it's a lot of work to put it all together. All right. Board?
Close session?
Yeah, we're going to close session. Let's see if we can get our labor team in here to start the process. We can get a half hour, pardon me? Was it, yeah, we did. Yeah, because she read entitled only. Yeah. Were you going to object?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Our next item isn't until 11, which is the budget for the fiscal year. So, we'll go into closed session, see what we can get done in the next half hour, and chug ahead.
All right, we'll call the board back to order. It is 11 o'clock and we're doing item 32. What's it to the presentation by the CEO Officer to receive the fiscal year 2005-06 preliminary budget?
Good morning again, Mr. Dursey.
Good morning, thank you ma'am chair. I have a somewhat brief presentation regarding the, our preliminary budget and I'll just begin with our overall budget priorities, the credibility in the community. I don't think this is probably the first time you've seen these. Again, delivering county services efficiently, effectively, fiscal discipline, and your board's commitment to a balanced budget. By the way, as Supervisor Long mentioned, a lot of these items, we did discuss when we went back to New York with the rating agencies and investors and they were very interested in your board's commitment to that, to that budget, balanced budget and, and long-term approach. Briefly, the budget process that we've, we're going through this year, calculation of our forecast, we do that in the, in the February timeframe. We develop costs for the, for the departments, give them those net target budgets, they develop how they want to spend their money, they try to determine the impacts. For the current year, we aren't seeing any significant impacts from our, from our budget in the current year as we, as we're presenting. The budget study session, which basically is this presentation, combined with the preliminary budget being presented. Originally, when we developed this, this chart, the budget study session was supposed to be on the 24th, but we postponed it till today. And then on the final thing would be budget, final budget hearing scheduled for June 20th. Total budget appropriations for this current year, 1.42 billion. That's up about 7.7 percent. In the general fund, 771 million budget appropriations, up about 4.8 percent. Like we said, the general fund budget is balanced and the, we are not, for the first time in a couple of years, we are not using any of our reserves and designations to balance our budget, primarily because the state has not dipped in too heavily this year.
Supervisor.
What's the percentage increase in our total budget appropriations and percentage increase in general fund budget appropriations?
7.7 percent on the 1.42 billion.
Right.
If you remember, last year was about 1.31 billion. And then on the, on the general funds, about 4.8 percent.
All right. And it's, the general fund appropriations is probably a more accurate picture of.
That's correct. Yes, because, yes, because the total budget appropriations would include road funds and those types of things that may have significant projects that they're going, going forward with. So you could see increases and actually decreases in that, on those types of appropriations over, over a year.
Thank you.
We have incorporated.
7.7 and then 4.8.
Yeah.
So 4.8 is what we should be.
We have incorporated all the known impacts of the state budget, except for one item really, and that's the AB 3632 program. We're hoping when we come back to your board on the 20th, we can reinstate some of those positions that are not, that we've taken out of this budget, actually. We assumed at the time we would develop the preliminary budget, that we would be cut in those areas. Based on our latest and greatest information we have, we may be able to restore a good number of those positions that we had originally cut in that AB 3632 program, which is mental health to school, school kids. Key preliminary budget data is countywide full-time equivalent positions. We're at almost 7,500 positions, up 77 positions from prior year bud, adopted budget, and then in. And then in the general fund, we're up about 37 positions from the prior year adopted budget. A good number of those 77 positions countywide are actually in the medical center, about over half of those numbers are in the medical center and they're, and that's actually done during the year. Based on, again, these differences, up 77 is from last year's adopted budget and during the year, we added a little over 40 positions for the medical center based on their needs. So a good, a good portion of these additions of the 77 are actually mid-year adjustments for grants in, in human services and, and in the healthcare agency and also in medical center. We have about a little over 40 positions added in there. From the budget standpoint, the main increases-
Pardon me, regarding the positions, you know, we laid off a little over 120 positions, I think, last year. So when you're adding these 77, we're still not up to any, the levels that we were at prior to the layoffs.
That's correct. Well, before the layoffs, we had in excess of 8,000 positions, I believe, countywide. And then we laid off, we, we cut about, almost 700 positions. We're adding back about 77 in the current process.
Thank you.
Give us those, give us those hard numbers again here for the benefit of the public. We used to be over 8,000.
Yeah.
And now how many total positions do we have?
About 7,500.
So we went from 8,000 down to 7,400. Now we're back up to about 7,500.
That's correct.
Okay.
Here's just a pie chart of the preliminary budget data. This is for, you notice the six, the red part is non-general fund. So out of that 1.42 billion dollars, 648 million is not in the general fund. The other, the blue part is the general fund and you notice that 510 million is what we would call mandated expenditures. 185 million dollars here is, 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 excuse me, I got that backwards. This is program-specific dollars. That's 510 million. 185 million, we, we consider to be mandated. And then the 75, roughly 75 million dollars would, is our rough calculation of what we would consider to be somewhat discretionary. And I say somewhat is that because under that somewhat discretionary includes our office, your board's office, county council's office, auditor controller, a number of offices that we would consider to be non-discretionary offices, but they are considered to be discretionary dollars. It's a matter of service level rather than-
And would the, would the school AB 3632, that would be under program-specific?
Yes, that would be. This is our general fund preliminary budget data. You notice the estimated revenue is at 782 million dollars and our overall total appropriations, what we expect at 771 million dollars. So what we're doing is, in the current fiscal year, we're estimating about 10 million dollars right here of, of fund balance, ending fund balance from the current year's operations. We've got a little bit extra revenue coming in in the current year and a number of dollars unspent in the current year. So we're expecting about a 10 million dollar fund balance in the current year, giving us 792 million dollars, what we would consider to be total available financing. Again, direct revenue, I mean, excuse me, revenues at 782 and then we have the appropriations that we're expecting and that's the 771 million dollars I alluded to before. So we have 771 million versus a 782. So you can see between these two numbers here, we're structurally balanced. As a matter of fact, we actually have excess revenue. However, I'll get to another slide where, where that excess revenue, so to speak, comes from. The, what we're, what we're recommending is a replenishing of our designations of approximately 20.7 million dollars. 10 million dollars for the current year and then another 10.7 million dollars from the budget year. And the 10.7 million dollars is really comprised of what we would consider to be one-time revenue and that is VLF gap loan repayment. And that's about 16.2 million dollars of VLF gap loan repayment. And of those dollars, we are appropriating about five and a half million dollars for public safety, bridge financing, and the other 10.7 million dollars, that plus the 10 million here is the 20.7 million dollars replenishment. So basically, we loaned the state monies back in '03, '04 and they're going to pay us back and we are going to pay ourselves back also. And that's our recommendation at this time.
When you-
No.
When you, when you call it replenished designations, do you mean increase the reserves?
Yes. We, we use the term replenish because basically we've depleted in the past and we are going to replenish. So, yeah, that's our term. We like, we like to remind ourselves that we're actually putting money back that we've taken out in, in prior years. So we are increasing it.
This will bring up our reserves to what percentage?
Roughly, and I'll get to those charges. I appreciate that, that-
I'll wait.
General fund, general purpose revenues excluding VLF gap loan, because that's about 16.2 million dollars. That throws it a little bit out of balance. It throws it almost 14%. So it's going up by about 7.4% in our general purpose revenues. Property tax of that, property tax revenues are, were estimated to grow by 8.2. At this point in time, that 8.2% we feel is a fairly conservative number. We, you know, we're trying to get as, as up-to-date information as we can from our assessor and right now, they're comfortable with that number. They're, they're probably thinking that it may be conservative. And if, if we get additional information before the 20th, we will, you know, come back to the board with, with additional dollars. Right now, I just, we're comfortable with the 8.2% and again, it's fairly strong. 8.2 is, is no slouch number, but that may be even conservative from our standpoint.
Why with your first bullet point, are we saying general fund purpose revenues are up 7.4% excluding VLF gap and earlier we said 4.8%?
Those are, excuse me, those are appropriations. Appropriations versus revenue. The appropriations are going up by 4.8, our revenues are going up by 7.4. And these are, these are general purpose revenues.
Okay.
And this is just a portion of the overall revenues. This is about 260 million dollars of our revenue of roughly 780 million.
Great, thank you. I just completely missed that.
Okay.
I think the 8.2 is a pretty conservative number.
We're, we're hoping, but right now, yes. Yes, we, we're probably conservative in that regard. And if we come back to you with additional dollars, we'll come back with additional recommendations of how to spend those dollars, too. I'm sure you have your own ideas, but the budget, the budget does include the second year of what, what we like, we affectionately refer to as the state ripoff of 7 million dollars. The current fiscal year is 7 million dollars. The state took, one of the shifts that they did was they transferred property tax locally in place of VLF and they shorted us 7 million dollars for this year and next year, next, the budget year. So we've included that so that in our revenue numbers includes a shortage of 7 million dollars. So general, again, public safety, operating budget net costs, these are net cost numbers. That's, again, they're, let's say, the general fund contribution to these departments is up by 9.7% in public safety. Non-public safety is up by 7.7. Couple notes on the total appropriations in public safety, the increase is 8.8%. And then total appropriations in non-public safety is up by 3.4%. So what happens is that you have a lot less direct revenue in the non-public safety areas than you do in the public, not all, but as a whole, you might say, because the overall costs are going up by 7.7% relative to the overall appropriations of, of going up by 3.4%.
Let me try to ask that in layman terms, to make sure I've got that straight and also ask a question. I'm going to ask my question first. What would the percentage increase for public safety be if we hadn't, if we didn't have this, you know, the 5 million dollar, I forget what we're calling it now?
Bridge finance, 5.5-
Yeah, the bridge, yeah, if we didn't have the bridge financing, what would be the percentage increase in public safety, operating budgets, net cost increase?
It'd be around, roughly speaking, around 4.6%. I mean, that is, that is the settlement agreement percentage that was calculated.
Okay, great. So my next question is, just so I have to be clear here, you're saying, because earlier you said, public safety's operating budgets overall are going up by eight point something, right?
Yes.
8.8% or so?
Yes.
But the, for the net county cost is going up by 9.7%. So in other words, we're having to take more out of our general fund to, to pay for public safety financing-
That's correct.
Than what they're, so it's hitting our net, it's hitting our net county cost harder than it's hitting overall?
The-
Yeah, general fund cost.
Yeah, it's hitting, it's hitting, it is dipping into our general, let's say, general purpose revenues.
Our discretionary revenue.
That's correct.
That's a better way to say it. So this dips into our discretionary revenue more and this will continue-
More than, more, I guess, more than-
Well, more than, more than the percentage would indicate.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah, it should, you know, you, you would like to see if, if their appropriations go up by 8.8% that, that our net county cost wouldn't go up by more than 8.8%. You'd hope it'd go up by less than that.
That's correct.
That, will that continue as long as we have the bridge financing? Is that the result of the bridge financing?
That, it's primarily the result of the bridge financing.
So when the bridge financing goes away, we should at least stop this trend? Because we don't want to keep this trend up either, which is-
That's correct.
Constantly, but this, so this is a temporary, temporarily, we're still pulling increases out of discretionary funding, but that's to sort of try to wrap up our settlement agreement with them.
Right, right. Got you, thank you. Okay, the, this is the 16.2 million on the VLF gap loan I mentioned to you before and it's, it's, we have 16.2 million that we're including in our budget. The cash won't actually technically come in until August of '06, but from a, an accounting standpoint and a budgetary standpoint, we are including those in, in the current year budget because they are, we've already earned the revenue, basically, and it's just a matter of when we get the cash. Once we know that we're going to get the cash within a certain number of days of the fiscal year end, the auditor controller allows us to, to book those as, as an accrual. So we are budgeting them. But anyway, the 16.2 million dollars, 5.5 million of that is going to the bridge financing and public safety and then our repay designations of, of the 10.7. I think I pointed that out earlier. And our budget does include a $2 million contingency. These are overall county issues we still are, we're trying to obtain and concerned with is the increase in reserve to board policy levels. I will have a, a little slide on the reserve levels in a, in a minute. Replenished reserves used in prior years, if you recall, we, in the last, this current budget, we used a little over 5 million dollars in reserves to fund state programs. Prior year, it was in excess of 16 million dollars reserves to fund state programs. Established reserves for unfunded liabilities. Unfunded liabilities are out there, for example, our retiree management benefit that, that's out there. There's GASB, meaning the Governmental Accounting Standard Boards, will require us to record certain liabilities that we do not have on our books in the current time. One of those is affectionately referred to as cost or care for management liability. We're doing a, so we're getting some actuarial information in that regard. However, there's no reserve and no liability established for the, for that particular benefit. So that, another, some unfunded liabilities that we have is, is the combination, combining retirees with active members in our healthcare pool. That's a liability that we do not have recorded on our books. And according to GASB, that's going to need to be recorded as far as, as far as the accounting books are concerned in, I believe it's '06, '07 or '07, '08. I'm not exactly sure. One of those years.
For the, and the employer, it would be '07.
Okay, thank you.
For the plan, it would be '06, '07.
Okay. Key litigation, which you're very familiar with, primarily, well, one is that we've, one we've settled and that's the 48, 488 litigation. The other is, of course, is the retiree litigation that's out, out there. Labor contracts, we are constantly concerned about the pressure for competitive wages. Required maintenance backlog, that continues on and we continue to try to address that issue and, and we are going to continue to address that issue as we, as we go along. And of course, future capital requirements. Fund balances, so we sort of, reserves, fund balances, savings account, county. Right now, we're, we're anticipating about a 70 million dollar balance for the county, which is higher than we've had in, in any years. If you look at these, these numbers, this is what we've also showed to the underwriters and bond, bond rating agencies, investors. These are key numbers for them also because of the fact, see this, this blue line? In all these years, that's part of our fund balance we actually used for, for financing. That's a, that's what we would consider to be our structural imbalance for those years. That year, 16, this was, I think, 16 million dollars. You see, this was huge dollars and those, those were, we would be using fund balance to fund subsequent year operations. This year, we're, we're happy to report at this time, we are not using any fund balance to, to finance subsequent year's operations. At the same time, we are increasing our reserve level to what we are almost, almost getting to the county intermediate objective of 10%. We see we're not quite there yet. The GFOA, this is our county goal up here at 15. We're still quite a bit, and 15%, just so, as, as an earmark, it's not quite two months' worth of operations. So we don't even have two months' worth of operational ability as far as our reserves. Two months would be a little over 16%. But we, the overall county goal we've set and it's GFOA recommended, GFOA meaning Government Finance Officers Association, this is our recommended amount at 15. We're getting there. We're, we're moving in a positive, positive way. So that, and we, that's one of our outlying objectives, obviously, is to continue to increase those dollars. These are, are proportional to your revenues is what these are. It's a, as a percentage, your fund balances as a percentage of revenues. And if you look at this, this one here, this is just pure dollars. You could have very little, very little dollars, but very little revenues and you're in better shape. But as we go up, we're actually increasing our, our pure dollars and at the same time, increasing our percentage as it is, as it relates to our revenues. So that's, that's, that's the good news. It's increasing and, and the bad news is we have a ways to go to get to the GFOA and our county goal.
When do you think that could occur based on how we're doing?
We're hoping within the next four or five years. We're hoping to ratchet up. We're hoping within three, but, but a lot depends on, well, clearly, the lot depends on the state and how they, on how they are operating and what they're taking. But, but if we maintain our current, our current spending levels and, and don't go, go beyond where, you know, our ability to pay, so to speak, then we should be there within three or four years, we're hoping.
But, I'm sorry, the, the one chart where you're showing the fund balance, revenues, designations and all, if you took into account inflation, would we still be at the highest level?
You mean, are you talking about this one here?
Yeah.
Well, actually, this one here will, will kind of give you a little bit better indication because this would take into account inflation.
Okay, that does.
Because, yeah, so you see, the percentages are, don't tick up as drastically as the pure dollars, you know? So that kind of takes into account where, where your additional revenues. If your revenues go up by a billion dollars and your, and your reserves only go up by a million, clearly, you don't, you're not keeping up with, with your, with your quote-unquote inflation as you, as you would refer to it. So this kind of gives you an indication of where we are relative to the overall revenues.
Thank you.
Key potential future impacts, state funding, the SB 90-
Excuse me.
Sure.
Now, you're going sort of to a different direction. If we experience in Ventura County, talk about our goal in terms of where to be there, you know, you'd love to be there in three years, realistically, probably four or five. If we experience a slowdown in real estate appreciation as a result of rising interest rates ultimately, I mean, right now, we're, we're really getting very nice, steady revenue increases, 7, 8, 9% a year. Assuming that doesn't keep up, that trend doesn't keep up and we drop down to three, you know, the more sustainable, regular 3, 4% a year, is, is your projection of getting there in three, you know, getting there in four to five years based on, on what kind of real estate appreciation here in Ventura County?
Generally speaking, in our projection, we've used about 5 to 5.5%.
Okay.
Which is kind of our historic, until we've gotten into this last couple of years, last couple of years are really significantly higher than, than our more long-term. So we've used about 5 or 5.5%.
But one of the reasons why we have to have a decent reserve designation is because as these revenues drop and all of these program costs go up, we're going to have to try to-
That's, that's correct. It does give you some, a lot of flexibility in that regard to, to try to bridge those programs for maybe a year where you think, we think we may grow out of it or it gives you just a lot more flexibility in that regard. So you could, you could bridge certain programs or maybe have to cut certain programs, but- you could bridge certain programs or maybe have to cut certain programs, but, but it gives the board a lot more flexibility for, for making those kind of determinations.
Right, thank you.
I said, the key potential future impacts, the state, our estimate right now, the state owes us about $25 million in past due SB 90 claims. Their intent is to start paying that off in, in year '06, '07, at the tune of $5 million, roughly $5 million, or 20% per year for five years. We are not anticipating that in our budget. We don't know if and when we're going to get that. If they could guarantee that we would get it in July or September of, of '06, at least the first $5 million, then we would, we would be able to include that in our budgets. But we don't really know, A, whether, whether or not they're going to be able to pay us back, and when during the fiscal year, that particular year when they'll pay us back. But we anticipate, we estimated it to be around 25 million, and they're going to be aggressively auditing those claims also. So they're going to try to find as much disallowances as they can as they come down and start auditing those, those claims. But I think that's a pretty safe estimate of 25 million. It's nowhere in the budget. Our intent would be to use that 25 million. That would go a long way toward, toward bumping up our reserves and designations towards our, towards our goal. And that's, you know, if we get the 25 million back from the state, if we, for example, if we included that in our number, it would increase our reserves and designations almost past our 10% range into the 11, 12% range. So that alone will, will help us attain our goal.
And does that come with interest? The IOU return?
No.
No.
And I think we have to be realistic. That isn't going to come. It's not coming.
We didn't think the Prop 42 would come, and that's kind of...
Well, but I tell you what I really think with this, is because the state has to fund this ongoing, that's this AB 3642 or 4236.
And a number of other SB 90 programs.
The same money that they're going to try to use to pay us back, the state also has to use to pay the ongoing expense. And I know exactly what's going to happen. They're going to give us a little tiny payback here. They say, "We're going to pay you $2 million now, and the rest we're going to use for the future." And then after they pay us $2 million now, they'll say, "We'll get you the rest later." You'll never see the later. That's, that's what I think, because they'll focus it all on the future.
But we're putting a lot of faith in the governor to do this, right, to pay us back?
Correct. We, well, it depends on your interpretation of faith.
When the state, when the state took so much of the property tax, like in '93, '94, then the percentage of property tax that contributed to the general fund budget was reduced significantly, like 18%. What is that percent today?
It's about, it's about 18, general fund gets about 18%, but that excludes the recent shift of, you know, BLF revenues for property tax revenues. When, after the first two years, after these first two years, that number will actually go up again because we'll, we'll get a greater percentage of the property tax, but we won't be getting any vehicleized.
But prior to the big take.
It was, I think about 30%.
It was like 30%.
Yeah, I think it was. And in regard to having faith, we do have faith that he'll pay us back, but we're not anticipating, we're not including it in a budget anywhere. Put it that way. If it comes back in, we will, our, our recommendation would be to increase our reserves and designations with that money.
Is that a trust that don't count?
That's correct.
It's a mystery, right?
Retirement litigation is out there also, I mentioned earlier, and of course, medical workers' comp insurance dollars are always out there. State budget impact, positive note is Prop 1A is approved. Child support penalty has been deferred again. Pension reform is out there as an issue. Locally, we haven't seen any real impact yet, but then the special election and the ability to pay for the special election, who's going to pay for it? Our indications are that the state says, has said, has said that they will pay for the special election. We'll believe that when the money's in our bank. The IHSS is another state impact that we, we have, we're hoping that they, we get conflicting. We do not have the reduction in IHSS contribution by the state in our budget. We have the old, old numbers. We're anticipating that that six minimum wage proposed by the governor will be overridden. It was too iffy at that point in time to really try to make a reduction in our IHSS program. So we are just going to assume that they will at least pay us the amount that we are, are budgeting. I think it's $8, $8 plus 60 cents an hour in benefits.
But if that action doesn't take, if they don't override that, then, then the gap is 675 to 8.
That's correct.
That we have to pick up, or we have to cut.
Or cut, or go back and renegotiate salaries with those people.
What's that translate to, dollar-wise?
I don't have that number. I can get that number for you.
Could you?
Conclusion. This document, as everybody knows, it's a working document. This is our, our best estimate at the time that we prepared it. We will have updates, corrections between now and the time that the board has the public hearing on June 20th. It remains balanced. We believe we're at, at a position where we do have some sustainability of the budgets. Reserves are being replenished. 48, eight litigation settlement is complete. Retirement rates, we think are, we hope are stabilizing. A lot depends on, of course, the return that the retirement board gets in their investment portfolio. We have gotten information from the actuaries that if they return their actuarial valuation estimate of 8% in the current fiscal year, that our rate should actually, our contribution rate should actually tick down in the subsequent years. So, so we're expect, we're hoping that, even if they don't quite make 8%, we're expecting the rates to stabilize and not go up again. In the last two years, we've gone from roughly a $30 million retirement contributions up to about $100 million retirement contributions within two years. About $50 million increase last year, another $20 million again this year. So, so they are going up, and we again hope to, hope those stabilize. We'd like to see them tick down, but again, there's, at least we expect them to stabilize.
For the benefit of the public, give us that, we, our pension contributions have increased by 70 million?
Over, over the last two.
In two years.
In two years.
In two years, we've had a, we've absorbed a $70 million increase.
That's correct. That's correct. Here's a statement we always like to make, fiscal stability, long-term approach. I think our office is trying to take a long-term approach, looking out in the years down the road, seeing what, trying to, trying to analyze, determine what's out there so we can make adjustments earlier than later. And then finally, what we consider to be cautious optimism, we're not going to, things aren't too rosy, but they're rosier relative to last year, let's say.
Not the last year.
And finally, our, the recommendations are actually in the board letter that's with your, with your recommended, our preliminary budget is accept the tabulation that's, that's prepared by the auditor controller in accordance with the government code. Request that the clerk of the board publish notice of the, of the final, final budget hearings on June 20th. Receive the preliminary document, preliminary budget as a working document for the, for the final budget hearings, and then schedule, go ahead and schedule the final budget hearings again for June, June 20th, beginning at, I think, 1:30 in the afternoon, we'll be able to make, we will give you our updated numbers, and departments will have the opportunity to make a presentation. And then at 6 o'clock that evening, will be public testimony. So if there's any additional questions, I'd be more than happy to try to, try to answer them.
Other questions? Okay, I don't hear of a motion.
Move the recommended actions.
Second. No, John made the motion.
Oh, right.
Already.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear him. I apologize.
John made the motion, and Supervisor Bennett on the second. I hadn't received any public request cards to speak on this, so motion and a second, hearing no objection to that motion. So ordered, we move forward to June 20th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of good work there. That concludes that item, which was, again, our 11 o'clock time-certain item. And at this time, we'll move forward to our 11:30 item, which is to, to hear from the First Five Ventura County on their 2005, 2006 budget. And it is a pleasure to have Supervisor Bennett introduce this.
Okay.
No problem. We have the executive director, if you come on up, Claudia, from the First Five Commission. And this is the annual presentation of the First Five's budget to the board for the board's information. And I would also offer that we have, I think, benefited from excellent leadership on the First Five Commission by staff, and particularly Claudia, in particular, as we're sort of moving into this next phase, which is a whole strategic planning, I think that you're seeing staffs exerting more and more leadership, and that's been, been really delightful and good for the board. So I think, maybe we'll give you one second, and I'll talk for a minute while Mr. Dursley finishes so that you have an audience, right?
Thank you.
Here we go. All right. Okay, good. Here we go.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. Good morning, chair members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to appear before you today. What I'd like to do is to briefly present our proposed FY 2005-'06 operating budget, and then highlight for you some of our key accomplishments over the past year. I refer you to the operational budget that was in your packet, and you will see that we have a proposed budget of $16.2 million. From the revenue side, this represents our monthly tax distribution from Prop 10 revenues. It represents some leveraged funds that we were able to receive through foundation funding, as well as some matching state grants, as well as some AmeriCorps federal dollars. And finally, allocations from our prior year's fund balance. On the expenditure side, you will see that it represents our three core program expenditures in Neighborhood for Learning, Health, and Family Strengthening programs. I also call your attention to our administrative expenditures. Since our inception, we have been committed to a targeted cap of 5.5% of administrative expenditures, which we have proudly met or exceeded each year. Our proposed budget represents 5.2% for the upcoming year. First Five here in Ventura County has given us a wonderful opportunity to directly invest in critical services for children, birth to five, and for their families. It's also given us an opportunity to really look at and create some system change in the way that services are provided. We've been able to build on existing capacity. We've been able to form strong partnerships, and we've been able to bring together organizations in different ways. Many of you are familiar with our Neighborhoods for Learning, on which at very local level, we've been able to amass critical partnerships with municipalities and locally-based community organizations. We've been fortunate to have that strong capacity on which to build. And in particular, I would like to thank the county programs who have remained a very important partner largely through Public Health, the Human Services Agency, and also through the District Attorney's Office. Over the past five years in total, we have been able to invest over $5 million in county partnership programs, bringing services to children and families throughout the county. We have strong relationships with our school districts. They've been very, very much involved in our Neighborhoods for Learning throughout the county as well. What I'd like to do is to just highlight a couple of key areas from our major accomplishments document. We had the opportunity to appear before you in April and to really talk about our preschool-for-all efforts, and I would just like to underscore what's happened through, since April. Preschool-for-all, as you know, is a statewide effort to really give parents the opportunity to voluntarily enroll their four-year-olds in preschools. We are one of 12 counties statewide that have really been forging ahead with this effort on a statewide basis. And we've been able to do that with Packard funding, local funding, and state First Five California funding. We talked about our work plan in April. We are just about to complete it and actually celebrate in July, and you will be receiving invitations as well. What's exciting about this is that the work over the past 18 months has represented partnerships and input from over 500 community and business leaders throughout the county. I talked earlier about those critical services. Preschool is one of those critical services that we know truly makes a difference in a child being ready to succeed in school. We are committed to making that a reality throughout Ventura County. To date, through our Neighborhoods for Learning, we have created over 775 ongoing preschool spaces. On an annual basis, through intensive summer programs for children who don't get to go to preschool, we have created 1,020 spaces for a month-long preschool program before they enter kindergarten. Through our Neighborhoods for Learning, we've also created 18 family resource centers. These are one-stop shops, if you will, where parents know they can go and receive information and referral to other services, services they might be eligible for through other means, as well as some direct services such as parent education. In our health program, I'd like to highlight a few programs. We have made a long-term investment in the HOPE program, which is a partnership with Public Health, and it's a program about enrollment in health insurance programs, Healthy Families, Medi-Cal, Kaiser, really finding a program. In the past year, over 100 children have been enrolled, but the most important part about this is not only are children enrolled, this program sees them through the utilization of their benefits. It makes sure that they have a doctor. It makes sure that they go to the doctor. So it's not just a matter of health insurance enrollment, but really getting the benefit, those health insurance benefits. Through another partnership with the Department of Public Health, we have been able to distribute approximately 11,000 kits to new parents throughout the county, of which we're very excited. This year, for the first time, we've been able to deliver the lion's share of those kits to mothers before they deliver. We know before you deliver is a time when you have time to read that, those brochures, watch those videos. And so we've been happy to change the tide on that. We continue with our home visits to our most vulnerable populations through our Every Family Counts program. In family strengthening, I'd like to actually congratulate the county as having been one of the recipients of the Work-Life Awards that we were able to fund through our family strengthening project. We are working very intensely with 13 businesses throughout the county in implementing family-friendly work-life policies, and they are in the process of developing a how-to handbook so that we can distribute this to more businesses throughout the county. Through our investments in foster care, we have really made an impact on the recruitment of foster families, the retention and support services such as respite care and childcare subsidies. We've talked before about our retention incentive program. These are training stipends to people working in family childcare and center-based programs, and it's really to help them improve the quality and to stay in the field. To date, in this five-year program, we have issued 1,700 stipends. It represents a $1.25 million investment and 27,000 training hours for early care and education workers throughout the county. We've implemented our evaluation system, which we're very excited about. It's called our GEM system, and it's going to be a data collection software system that will really truly be able to see are the investments we're making helping us make the difference that we're intending to, and if not, what do we need to do to change that, to assure quality assurance throughout the county, and to move on with further investments. And finally, in a general sense, we were able to be one of the major funding partners in the launch of 2-1-1, which I know the county is aware of, launched in February, and we are proud to be one of the partners that made that happen. What I'd like to briefly do before I conclude is to call your attention to the regional highlights, because I think in each of the Neighborhoods for Learning, there are very exciting things that I'd like to just take a moment to highlight for you. In the Moore Park SEME NFL, one of our largest geographical NFLs, three family resource centers have been created. What's significant here is, is that they not only looked at the needs of each community, SEME and Moore Park, but they realized in this geographical area there were families that they couldn't reach through traditional means. So one of the family resource centers is a mobile one, and they actually bring services out to parents in isolated areas. In the Conejo Valley NFL, they've been very successful with their preschool classes and family resource centers, and I know Supervisor Parks has been involved in a lot of their sustainability efforts, of really looking at local ways to increase their funding and to make sure that they can provide the same level of services as they move forward. Oak Park NFL, one of our smallest NFLs, actually helped create the first preschool in Oak Park. And significant here is that our contribution is very small, but they were able to use that to leverage additional local contributions largely through private fees. The Pleasant Valley NFL, for the first time, has begun to offer subsidized preschool, and so we have preschool opportunities there in the Pleasant Valley. Santa Clara NFL, I think Supervisor Long knows that they were faced with a lot of challenges in terms of their startup, but wonderfully, they are started up. They have ramped up, and they are providing services. What I'd like to point out is, is that one of our initial visions for the NFL is that they would truly become a neighborhood hub, and that's what's happening in the Santa Clara Valley. Parents know there's a space they can go, that they would get linked up with economic resources, as well as get the types of parent education and information that they need to raise healthy children. Wayneemi South Oxnard, this has been one of our flagship sites. Wayneemi South Oxnard, this has been one of our flagship sites for preschool for all. We've worked very closely with the school district and they have opened a preschool this past year. Ocean View NFL, long, long history of preschool in that community, but our funds were able to create additional spaces to make even more children able to attend. Oxnard NFL, one of our largest NFLs in terms of allocation, five hubs in the Oxnard NFL. Through this work, we will be able to create over 240 preschool spaces. There's a wonderful family literacy program that goes through in Oxnard as well in a partnership with El Centrito throughout all of the hubs, which has really created an opportunity for families there. Rio NFL, a small NFL, but it's been able to create significant preschool spaces. And I call your attention to Ventura and Ojai. I talked about a lot in the other NFLs about new preschool spaces. In Ventura and, and Ojai, they recognized they had spaces, but they had families that couldn't afford them. So a large part of their effort was to create tuition vouchers, to create subsidies to existing spaces through their same end, but really looked at what were their local needs and the local capacity. There's more in the documents before you, but I really did want to highlight those areas. As Supervisor Bennett mentioned, the commission is in the midst of its strategic planning for our third strategic plan. And I actually look forward to coming back before you again in the next couple of months to present for your input our new strategic plan that will carry us into future years. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions?
Or comments?
Yeah. A question is what it is. In the future planning, is it the intent to keep Simee and Moore Park together? You know, they, they appear to be one of the few areas, and I know they were forced together in the beginning. And I was just wondering if there is any look now at separating the two and making it a Simee NFL and a Moore Park NFL?
Actually, from the beginning throughout, we had gone and we allocated dollars among seven regions and then expected that some of those regions would subdivide, which, and some did, which is why we have 11 Neighborhoods for Learning. Interestingly enough, we fully expected Simee and Moore Park to subdivide, but at that point in time, the community felt really strongly that they wanted to stay together.
That's not what I heard, but go ahead.
Okay. But with that being.
Boy, it wasn't what I heard.
With that being said, we really look at the NFLs as our ability to have local control and local input. And so it's a dynamic process. And so at the point in time that it feels, you know what, it's not working and maybe it would work better, we would always be open to being able to do that. I, I appreciate your question because I know with a large geographical area, it, there's been challenges through that.
Extreme challenges.
Yeah, and we would always be open to re-looking at that and working with the community around those issues.
Okay, yeah. I hope that that does happen. I think it would be beneficial to both, you know, in the future. It's certainly not my decision to make, but you know, in your planning process, I, I hope you maintain flexibility should that decide to happen.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment how remarkable, how far you have come in such a short time in, in providing preschool throughout the county. It's just, it's very commendable and particularly the outreach to the lower-income families that wouldn't otherwise be able to afford it. While there are still places that don't have it available, there are also those that couldn't afford it even if it was available. So it's, it's really nice to see the, with the progress that is in made.
Thank you.
Has it really been five years?
It's actually been five years for me, but some of you actually predate that.
Yeah.
The ordinance passed in 98 and I think the commission was formed actually in December 98.
Yeah. Just a comment, I, I think the accomplishments and the work has just been extraordinary and, and it has been real on-the-ground benefit for families and children. And, and I was there, Supervisor Michaels, in the early days with this NFL, with the dialogue on forming the NFLs and, and doing our very best to, to give them a framework, but allow great flexibility. And, and I know that there was some, a lot of dialogue, I expect, that we didn't even hear between the two communities, Moore Park and Simee. But at the end of the day, the decision to stay together at that time seemed to be the best. But the, the beauty of the model is that if they choose now, that they've got their feet on the ground and some, some real foundation to work from in both communities, then that's their choice. If they wish to then take the money and, and distribute it differently. But the successes of, of, in each community to have their own framework and their own characteristics of what they feel their, their, their neighborhoods need has just been extraordinarily beneficial, I think. So they can do different things to benefit their community. So outstanding work. Other comments? It is a, an update for us and, and to review and receive the, for the, for file.
Move to receive and file.
And thank you. Thank you very much.
A motion and a second and hearing no further questions or objections to that. We thank you for your good work. Look forward to the next, and results of the strategic plan as it comes forward to us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation, Claudia.
All right, board members, we are finished with our regular agenda. We'll go back in a closed session to finish our closed session. Will there be an announcement?
Will there be lunch?
There won't be any announcements and I can't answer the lunch question.
There always is.
I heard a doorbell.
Although usually is because the CEO usually calls and.
Actually, I think Tom takes care of it.